Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the second night of the second week of the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County's Candidate Forums for the 2020 General Election. I'm Andy Polley. I am the president of your local League of Women Voters. And I just have a few quick announcements before we get started this evening. Let's see, mail-in ballots went out on Friday. So if you've received yours, you can turn it into the Supervisor of Elections Officer. There's about four of them in this county. There'll later be some secure drop box locations throughout the county as well. You can find out where those are by visiting the Supervisor of Elections website. Early voting starts out on October 19th. There are five early voting locations available to all St. Lucie County voters. It's the same five locations that were available during the primaries. Election Day itself is November 3rd. If you vote on Election Day, you must vote at your precinct. To learn more about the candidates, all of the candidates on your ballot, you can visit our website and then the link to vote411.org. We have different questions there. We also have different questions from our primary forums than you'll see here tonight. So if you catch all of it, you'll be very well informed about these candidates and all of the candidates on your ballot and the six amendments that you'll find there. Tonight is school board night. So we're going to hear from candidates running for both district seats within the school board that are up for election. Tonight, right now, we're starting with District Four, and we'll have District Two at about 8:30. The format for both of tonight's forums is the same as it always is, 90-second introductions from each of the candidates, and then two minutes for to answer a series of questions. And if we have time after that, and you've posted your questions, we will pose them on your behalf to the candidates. After that time, and if we have any of those questions to ask and get answered, we will move on to closing statements, which is two minutes per candidate, and then that will wrap it up. We determined the rotation and the order of candidates earlier by coin toss, so we're all set and ready to go. The candidates will be alerted at 30 seconds and when their time is up, so that they don't run over. Our moderate for the forums is, as always, Carol Wyatt. Carol is the co-owner and operator of the local radio stations WPSL in Port St. Lucie, WSTU in Stewart, and WJNX in Fort Pierce. She is the president of WPSL Christmas Kids of St. Lucie County, past president of the Rotary Club of Port St. Lucie, and a member of the Port St. Lucie Businesswoman. Carol has many years in broadcasting, including as a reporter in Los Angeles, prior to moving to Florida in 1993. We are honored, as always, to have her as our moderator, and so I'm going to turn it over to Carol.
Thank you, Andy, and welcome to another League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forum. We want to thank the members of the League for developing the questions. We thank the candidates for being here, participating, and then we also thank you for informing yourselves about the general election. So this evening, St. Lucie County School Board, District Four. It is a county-wide race. It is for a term of four years, and it's a seat on the board that sets policy for St. Lucie County Public Schools. Our candidates are incumbent Catherine Hensley and challenger Jennifer Ann Richardson. Now, by coin toss, ahead of time here, we determined Catherine Hensley would go first on opening statements. Ms. Hensley?
Good evening. I am Catherine Hensley. I've been on the school board for quite a while. And while we've been there, we have changed almost everything. We have incorporated more career and technical programs. We have 52 different certification programs within the school district. We have closed the learning gap, you know, all groups of children, and we actually have one of the highest graduation rates in the state with a pathway for each child and to be successful as an adult. Because education is not about education, per se. Education is about the pathway to productive citizenship. I've been involved with any entity that has anything to do with children or the future of my county. I sit currently on, I think, 22 different boards and committees, and they're all focused, basically, on what is going to happen and for the benefit of children and families in St. Lucie County and beyond. I am dedicated to kids. I am dedicated to my community, and my life's mission has always been to do what's right for children. And I intend to keep on doing that and making sure that every child has a wonderful opportunity that may not have existed 20 years ago, but does now, and more will be. Thank you.
Okay, opening statement, Jennifer Richardson.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Richardson, and I'm running for St. Lucie County School Board. As a mother of three children who graduated from the St. Lucie County School System, and a past treasurer on the PTO, on a PTO board, I have more than 20 years' experience with the schools in our county as a parent. As an employee, I've had the privilege of working as an assistant teacher at Southern Oaks with children at risk. I owned a business for over 10 years, and so I know what it takes to be a leader who leads by example. I was a board member on the NAACP, and so I know what it is to advocate for the rights of others, to be their voice. I have worked with and mentored children with an emphasis on empowering our young girls. I also have earned a Bachelor of Science degree in organizational management from IRSC. Thank you.
Okay, we heard the opening statements. We will begin, first question, with Catherine Hensley, and then we'll rotate who gets the first question after that. So first one, it has been a little over a month since the primary elections. While campaigning and talking to voters during that time, have you learned of new concerns, or have their concerns changed in any way? Ms. Hensley?
Some of the concerns have changed when we started going back to the schoolhouses. We have had very little negative input on that issue, because there seems to be the understanding that we were very careful about how we reopened our schoolhouse. So basically, the issues have stayed pretty much the same. People are still concerned about diversion of money to vouchers without accountability for taxpayer dollars. And the idea is that we are progressing very quickly in a variety of things, and how are we going to keep the Manufacturing Academy going and that sort of thing, under this, I guess you'd say, this dark cloud of the pandemic. How do we keep our vocational programs going forward? The academic programs are one thing, but the cultural programs, the arts programs, and some of the vocational programs have caused some questions to be asked, and there's been some retooling to be able to pivot to meet those needs.
Okay, same question to Ms. Richardson. New concerns, or have people's concerns changed in any way?
The concern that I've heard from parents is they're on, well, the schools are brick and mortar. You know, they are not, the parents that I've spoken to are not, they are still concerned about the COVID virus and how it's still spreading, and, you know, the schools are being, not necessarily closed, but, you know, they have the quarantine here and there, and, you know, so they are concerned for the health and safety of our children, of our teachers, and of the support staff. So pretty much that has been the concerns. It's the health and safety.
Okay, next question comes back to Jennifer Richardson. St. Lucie County is large, densely populated, and diverse. In your opinion, are there specific communities whose needs are not being adequately met, and how will you address?
Yes, there are communities that the needs are not, I don't believe, are being met adequately. And so I think that we need to focus on these underperforming schools, or current school board highlights their achievement. But did you know that we have elementary schools that are on Florida's list of persistently underperforming schools? All have over 85% of minority students, with more than 90% economically disadvantaged students, and these schools are Title I schools. Parents, if I can speak to you for a moment, we can restructure these schools, focus on teaching and learning, building relationships between the student and the teachers, and we should be committed to ongoing improvements of these schools, and of course, you know, the district and fiscal support. Every child can learn. Learning starts with trust. If the teacher or the student know that they are loved, cared for, and safe, we will have created that atmosphere for learning. So we need to focus on these schools, these areas. I've said it, you know, we are as strong as our weakest link. So that is one of our weakest links. It is with our minority in that, with children. And so I think in order for us to become a fable community, that's where we need to start.
Okay, for Catherine Hensley, same question. Are there specific communities whose needs are not being adequately met, and how do you address it?
We're addressing a lot of those needs by focusing, we have an equity program that we're very, very committed to. So it's not about equality of funding, it is equity of funding. So we have people that misunderstand that they look at third-grade reading scores, and they use that as their protocol for make a decision about what's going on. But what we do is take the individual children and create a pathway for them, so they are actually graduating, no matter what zip codes they're in, they're actually graduating at the same rate across the county. The one thing we're doing now is because we have people that don't have access to good Wi-Fi out in the hinterlands, especially west of King's Highway and some other places, we have retrofitted some buses that we're not using. They're sitting around the county, they are the Wi-Fi access for that. So we've been trying to make sure that if we find an issue where somebody's disadvantaged, that we react within, hopefully, within 24 hours, to make sure that that is adjusted. We do have a very high poverty rate. We have about 75% of our students countywide qualify for subsidized or free lunch. So we have to be very cognizant that we have a high poverty level, and so we are focusing a lot of our budget and a lot of our policies to make sure that no child is disenfranchised, no matter where they live. We have schools that do as well by state standards as others, because they are so, they have so many kids with special needs or don't speak, families don't speak English, and we are addressing that. So no matter what happens, when they're in third grade, they're graduating on time, because we're going to make, we have made sure of that.
Okay, next question comes back to Catherine Hensley. The state has allowed teachers to be armed in the classroom. It's been proven by the FBI and the military that firearm proficiency is lost without frequent training and practice. So what is your position about arming teachers in classrooms? What policies would you implement to ensure continued proficiency for teachers who are armed?
We have made statements in our policy book, we do not arm faculty, staff, unless they are law enforcement. We will not do that. We've, I've been, I've said in several offices in Tallahassee and had those conversations. So we will not be doing that. With our local referendum that the voters passed very, very handily last year, we're not put in the position that we have to make that decision. But we did make a public decision after public input. We are not going to be participating in the Guardian program for the state.
Okay, same question to Ms. Richardson. Your position about arming teachers and what policies are needed to make sure their proficiency continues?
I think that the safety of our teachers and children is foremost. We do have security already on campus. We have, you know, the officers there on campus, and so I am going to just go along with what the state says, you know, and work with the school board, whatever it is they have implemented right now. And I think, you know, if it came to, to, or, you know, the safety of children, if it becomes even more radical, then we'd have to revisit that issue. We have some great teachers and support staff, or teachers are professionals, and we need to support them by building an environment that is conducive to retaining and attracting them to St. Lucie County.
Okay, next question for Jennifer Richardson. What is your position on school vouchers, and why?
School vouchers. I think that all of this, this is a state law, and it's already been determined by the state. So whatever the state says, that's what we go along with, and that's just the way it is.
Okay, Catherine Hensley, your position on school vouchers, and why?
We have taken a significant stance against vouchers. We can't do anything right about it, but that is one of our key issues. If people take vouchers, take state money, federal money, they need to be held accountable for that. Right now, there is no measure for accountability for the dollars that are taxpayer dollars that go to a private entity on a voucher. They also have an issue with making sure the curriculum is appropriate. Children that are special needs can get a voucher to go almost anywhere they want, but we've found over time that most of those vouchers are not providing the education that the parents assume they're getting. So I am against vouchers, because it does take money out of the public schools without serving the students first and without being accountable for taxpayer dollars.
Okay, back to Catherine Hensley. Just over half of St. Lucie County parents elected the online option for their children in August. What do you think the district will learn about educating in a virtual setting from the first semester of the school year?
We're going to learn a lot. We've already learned a lot. What we have found so far is that we have some students who are doing well on that. And by doing live streaming, instead of doing, basically, totally virtual, this teacher can see all the kids on the screen. So it's really a classroom setting, and we're finding that some students that have resources, that have parents at home or have that sort of thing, are finding that to be successful for them. Where we have some concern, I have a personal concern, are kids that are special needs, who really need, potentially, to be in that setting where there's actually a closer touch. But right now, we're finding that sometimes flexibility in the schedule is going to be successful for a lot of kids. Our technology is being uptick. We have probably, we're leading the state in our technology and how we're doing that, so we're sharing that information. So we're learning, we're learning a lot. We're seeing the hiccups, but we're seeing the pluses also. And we found that our faculty, because we have, I think, stellar teaching faculty, they were able to pick up on this and use it very successfully. So I'm very pleased with what we're learning and how we may be able to inform the flexibility of education per child as we go forward.
Okay, same question, Ms. Richardson. What will the district learn about education in a virtual setting for this first semester?
Okay, so from a parent's point of view, because I am not in the district right now. So from a parent's point of view, I think that, for one thing, for virtual learning, the parents and the children are bonding. They are building that relationship that they probably would not have built outside of this, of being in a room or in a house together for 24/7. So that is probably not a bad thing. And learning virtually, the kids, it's teaching them some independence, I believe. It's teaching the parents how to, what the kids are actually learning in school, so they are right there on the forefront themselves, learning with the kids, so they have a good idea about the curriculum. So going forward, they will be able to come to the school board meetings and have some very informed conversations about what exactly their children are learning, because before now, they weren't hands-on involved. So virtual learning, I think, has a lot of pros, a lot of cons, as well, we have to stay home with them. But I see good things coming out of the virtual learning.
Okay, for Ms. Richardson, if we can dream for a moment here, if funding for education was not a concern, what educational areas would you improve, and why?
If funding was not a, what educational, you know, I think that I would work on vocational and technical schools, most definitely. I would expand and a lot more, and maybe build a whole building, you know, with all these different trades, and, you know, have these kids go in, the ones that are not, you know, that are not going to college. College is not for everyone, and we are failing to provide an education for all our children, if not all, if they're not all college-bound. So I think that if we have all these different trades, they can go touch these trades, they can decide whether or not they like it, you know, because I think touching them, feeling them, doing it, will tell them, you know, whether or not they have an aptitude for it. So I think that's something that I would definitely expand, promote in our, in our, in the county, in the school system.
For Catherine Hensley, same question. What educational areas would you improve, and why?
I would, if I had all the money, which of course is never going to happen, I would change that two-mile-from-the-school thing for buses, to be able to pick them up. We have a growing population, that means some places are hazard, but they don't meet the state standard for hazard. I would provide busing within the, for every kid that's outside of a mile from their school. I would retrofit some of our schools to bring them up to the new schools. We've been working on that little by little. I would have a school out at the research park that's tied into the University of Florida curriculum. I would, we have all these trades, and one of the things we have with our trades is we have these partnerships. I would like to be able to expand the partnerships we have. Right now, we have a lot of people that, from like the Treasure Coast Builders that are volunteering. It'd be nice if we would be able to compensate them for the work they're doing with the building trades and that sort of thing. So knowing we're never going to be to a position where we have to, we don't have to choose what we're going to do, I think that those would be some of my priorities to look at first.
Okay, coming back to Catherine Hensley, in your opinion, what is the biggest obstacle to providing high-quality education to every student?
We have found the obstacles and have pretty much tried to overcome them. We thought we were going to have a lot of difficulty getting some of the teachers, like physics teachers and teachers that are dealing with autistic students. So far, we have not found that to be true. Trying to create the environment where people want to work in this county, and they are mission-oriented, and they want to work with our children, has served us well. So I think that when we find an issue like that, we try to resolve it very quickly, and we have a track record of being able to do exactly that.
Okay, same question for Ms. Richardson. The biggest obstacle to providing high-quality education for every student?
So when I think of education, I think of teachers, and I think of children. So one of the obstacles, I would say, is all being able to retain or experience teachers. Again, we have great teachers and our support staff, or teachers, like, again, they are professionals, and yes, we do need to support them. I know that in this area of COVID, attracting them is maybe not, is not, you know, people are, they're not wanting to go into the school to teach. However, it's important that we retain the ones that we have. I am an advocate of paying our teachers and support staff according to their accreditation and experience, providing affordable medical benefits for them and their families. I am in total agreement that they should receive regular raises equating to the job that they do, and incentive bonuses for a job well done. This would be instrumental in our teachers' retention. So above everything else, we do need good teachers, we do need good support staff, and everything else will follow. That's what education is about.
Okay, next question, Ms. Richardson. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting loss of revenue to local and state government, it seems likely school districts will experience funding cuts in the years to come. How will you ensure that all the needs of students, faculty, staff, and parents are met with less money available?
Well, it's funny you should ask that question. I think that we prioritize, you know what you have, and we work with what we have. When I go to the supermarket, and I don't need to placate anybody or to be whatever, you know, when I go to the supermarket, if I have $20, I can only get $20 worth of stuff. So I decide what is priority, what are my needs today, and that is what I will get. So on a very one-on-one, simple basis, because I want everybody to understand, I'm going to speak above anybody's head, that, you know, we need to prioritize. We get, we work, again, we have stuff, we use what we have, and we get what we need. In addition, we have some very awesome community members. So if we reach out to the community, and they know it's for our kids, they will give of their time, their expertise, their money, whatever it is that we need. We just need to build those relationships with our community. I'm not a politician, and but I'm here to get a job done. We need, again, discipline in our spending by setting priorities. We need to be accountable to parents and community. The last time I checked, the school board serves the community. It is time to take a fine-tooth comb and eliminate that which does not add value to the education of our children.
Okay, same question to Catherine Hensley, meeting students, staff, faculty, needs with less money available.
We already have a plan, we're putting in place with the what-ifs that may happen in December. But with the voter referendum that was passed last year, we've been able to give our teachers a significant pay increase, and so we have been able to retain our teachers. We started our school year, even with this bad economy facing us and with the pandemic, we still opened our schools with fewer openings than we've had for a long time. We've been able to retain and still recruit quality educators. So we do have a plan going forward. We have a plan to make sure we can safeguard our staff and faculty to the greatest degree for their, all their perks, as well as potentially a pay increase, as well as looking at what we can do where. And that's where the community partnerships come in. So we can still progress with the building trades, even if we have to cut the funding a little bit, because we have the partnerships. We can do the same thing with the culinary arts and all those different programs we have. Because of the relationships that we've been able to build, we are in a better position than most counties because of that and because of our referendum. So we have a plan. We are hoping that the plan doesn't have to be enacted, but we do already have a plan in place.
Okay, we have come to the end of our questions for this evening. It is time now for closing statements, and we'll begin with Catherine Hensley.
I am very excited about what's happening in this school district. People have told us that you can't do what you do in a county with the demographics we have. And we have shown the state, and we've actually shown way beyond the state, what you can actually do with a focus and your budget matching your priorities. So I'm very pleased with that, and I really want to be able to see some of these things come to fruition. We have a lot of things in the pipeline to serve our kids and our families. And I think that I have the relationships, I have the knowledge, and I have the will to fight those advocacy battles where they're needed, to make sure that what is best for our kids actually stays as a focus of this county, and that things that come in as personal agendas that try to take hotshots at this district are beat back, and that people understand the wonderful things that are going on in this district for every single child, whether they have an IEP, regardless of their background or zip code, it doesn't make any difference. We focus on individual student success. We put the child in the middle of the table and say, what does this child need to be successful? Graduate on time, have a pathway to good citizenship, and then we find those resources, whether they be in the school district or in the community. So I really hope to get the vote and to be able to continue this path, because I have a few things left I really want to accomplish.
Thank you. Closing statement, Jennifer Richardson.
Thank you. Parents, I just want to speak to you for a moment to let you know. Parents, I just want to speak to you for a moment to let you know that I am running to be your representative, your voice on the St. Lucie County School Board. Parents, guardians, the community, I will be your voice for progress whereby every child has an opportunity to succeed. I will be the voice of common sense to promote and expand vocational and technical schools. I will be the voice of fiscal responsibility, using our tax dollars in the classroom to prepare our children for life as productive citizens. I will be the voice of our educators and support staff, who are our frontline heroes. I need your vote on August 3rd. If you need a voice on the school board, vote Jennifer, I'm sorry, November 3rd. If you, thank you. If you need a voice on the St. Lucie County School Board, please vote Jennifer Richardson. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been a long year.
It has been a very long year.
We want to thank our candidates for taking part in this evening's forum. Catherine Hensley, Jennifer Ann Richardson. We thank the League of Women Voters for developing our questions, and certainly thank you for listening, for watching, and for informing yourselves. Andy?
Thank you, Carol, and thank you, candidates. And thank you, everyone, that stopped by to check out the form tonight. We do apologize for our technical difficulties last night. And we will definitely have Port St. Lucie City Council Night up on our YouTube page this evening. And then we will, we'll give you the link on Facebook, so come back and check it out. Hopefully, we can get it up before the next forum, but I guarantee nothing. It's busy here at the League of Women Voters. Again, thank you all for participating in the election process. Thank you to everyone that's participated, and thank you to the members of the League. And don't forget to vote.